des universités, une télévision s'installe. Télébel top, la télévision de l'information.
Ouais, j'ai résonné à, ouais, j'ai réveillé la vie à parce que je sentais ses richesses.
Exercice, enfin, il y a une question à poser, observateur, est-ce que son façon pour le prisonnier américain ? Télébel top, c'est la télévision de l'éducation. Nous connectons avec toute activité communautaire. Télébel top, la télévision de la spiritualité. Télébel top, c'est la télévision de la distraction. Malgré tout, avec chez la voix de Tien Sito. Télébel top, très bientôt sur Woco. Télébel top, c'est la télé. Good evening, the countdown starts until the D-Day, September fourteenth, two twenty-one, the primary election in Boston. Today, my top will take the lead by tackle the real issues with the candidate. Welcome to the road to the primary election. My name is Erlich Derilas. Today, I have an honor to have in my studio, Telebel top studio, Evendo Cavaro. Continue for district four. How are you doing, sir?
I'm good, I'm good.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too, my man.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me, man. It's a pleasure to be here with all of you. As you said, I mean, elections is but for, you know, perhaps a little over a week to go, September fourteenth. And I certainly want to give you kudos and the whole Belltop team, Junior, Sam and all the others for a wonderful job through the season to keep it up and informed.
Tell us all if the campaign is going as we approaching the D-Day.
It's, it's, it's non-stop.
Okay.
But I would say as someone, who I say on a campaign trail, day one ready. In a sense that I've not only been elected state representative in the city of Boston and work in the city now as the head of the Maritz Commission, I have a ton of experience campaigning. And I will say that I'm having a lot of fun, meeting, meeting folks at the doors, you know, canvassing, going to events, going to churches, it, it, one of the things about running for office that, you know, albeit it sometimes is tough on the families, but it's also a lot of fun and particularly, you know, if folks are liking what you're saying, which I, I think by and large I've had great support out there.
You know, you're former state rep.
Correct.
And you run for DA as well in the past. And now you're running for city council. How do you feel to be back on the road campaigning?
I, I feel great, man. You know, it's, you know, obviously, having served on Beacon Hill for five years as state rep, I know how impact for elected officials can be, whether it's working on policy or budgeting priorities or more importantly constituent services. You know, when someone calls your office or sees you on the street and needs help with something, needs access to, to whether it's a job or access to services in City Hall or in state government, I know how to do that, right? And obviously, after serving on Beacon Hill for five years, I took a shot at district attorney. I'm an attorney for folks that don't know. I am a lawyer. In fact, I went to Howard Law, Black University in Washington DC and graduating to twelve, two thousand and eight. I also serve as an ADA. I was an assistant district attorney. I was hired by Dan Conley way, this is over ten years ago. So, you know, so having gone for DA though and giving up my rep seat, you know, I, I, I will say that it was tough loss, right? So it's not easy to put, to put my name on a ballot again, but it's my calling. It's, it's, you know, to me, I'm a public service, I'm a public servant, excuse me, and I love being in public service. So whether it's appointed or elected, you know, I look forward to continue to serve people in the city of Boston.
As we are approaching the school opening, some schools already open. If you elected, what would your plan to be, a plan B to be to safely reopen a BPS school in September twenty twenty-one?
I mean, obviously, right now, you know, schools were around the corner, right? And Boston Public Schools, along with all the schools throughout the state are reopening. And we know that unfortunately, COVID nineteen is still around and in fact, numbers appear to be increasing with the Delta variant, which much apparently is much more, much more deadlier. And I would say that, you know, I think some of the things that's already happening, including the mayor, Mayor Kim Janey requiring that students wear masks is important. So, you know, some of the other things that we have to do, particularly on the city council, for me, will be to make sure that I'm in touch with the mayor, that I'm in touch with the school leaders, Superintendent Brandon Castellars, the, the, the Boston Teachers Union, their leadership and the, and the teachers and students to figure out what else is, is happening. But I know that the city has done a good job with retrofitting some of the buildings to make sure that we have proper ventilation. Obviously, they did a lot of that last, last year, you know, that we have hand sanitizers everywhere. So I think, you know, we've learned a lot from last year during twenty twenty and it's important that we continue to grow. And but most importantly, as we go back to school, you know, our students learning is imperative, but public safety, excuse me, public health is, is the single most important thing that's gonna be in my mind when we return, when I'm city council and looking at what BPS is doing in terms of reopening schools and not only reopening, but ongoing, right? Throughout next, uh, next year.
The mayor in New York, Mayor de Blasio, after the Labor Day, people required vaccine passport in New York.
Right.
And if elected mayor in Boston required that, would you support that as a silicon film?
You know, honestly, this, obviously, this is a hot, a hot issue in the city of Boston. I know that, you know, folks ask the mayor, a current mayor, Mayor Kim Janey about, about this issue as well. I, I would say that, you know, the focus for me has been and will continue to be on getting people more and more educated about the vaccine. As you know, I've been working particularly in the Haitian community, we passed the key key. Doctor Gabor over at the immigrant services, and many, uh, and many of the churches to make sure that folks have the information they need to make the right choice to get vaccinated. I've been vaccinated. I've been telling people that, my family, my, my wife, my, my mom was older. She's been vaccinated. I, I, I caution the, the requirement in a sense of, of, of a passport, if you will, or card that, that, you know, if you can't, if you don't, if you can't show you are, you are vaccinated, that you can't enter a space. I guess it depends on the space, but I do think that running for district four, which unfortunately also has a lot of, you know, it has a disproportionate amount of individuals that have not been vaccinated, right? And it's has a disproportionate, has a lot of black people, black people that are from immigrant, black people like us, whether it's from Caribbean or Haiti, in Haiti, in Jamaica, or, or, or Trinidad, or Kavirians, you know, like a lot of those folks, the reason that they are not getting vaccinated is beyond just like, I'm not gonna go, right? It's deep rooted cultural differences, deeply rooted, you know, issues with health or healthcare that, you know, so I'm cautious to sort of say, you know, let's have a citywide, you know, mandate that forces people in that situation because I think it's gonna desperately impact district four. But I am doing the best I can to, to again, to make sure the individuals in this district four get vaccinated.
If elected, how would you ensure Boston complies with the federal mandate to hire more teachers of color?
I mean, this is another, well, obviously, the, the, another issue relating to, to schools, right? You know, same thing we're dealing with unfortunately in the business side of things too, which a study just indicated that over two billion dollars are spent by, by City Hall, by, by Boston over the past several years and very few were towards business of color. In that space, what we have to do to comply with the mandate is to make sure that's more, you know, not only trained teachers, but making sure that teachers of color are applying to these jobs too. And figuring out what is this keeping teachers of color from getting to BPS? And more importantly, and I've, I've talked to some teachers about this, it's not only about getting in, but, but retaining. How do we keep those, you know, people, especially black men in those schools? So, you know, I'm certainly gonna talk to, to, again, this is another space to partner with, with BPS leadership as well as the mayor and the union to figure out what it is that we can do more. But I also think that again, beyond just trying to enforce the mandate, it's about figuring out the pipeline and retaining teachers as well.
Let's talk about Madison Park.
Yes.
Every two years, every four years, we're hearing the same thing. All the candidates always talking about Madison Park, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. If you elected, what will be, will be your plan to make sure that happen? We're not doing about it and the action is really happening.
I'll say another, another great question, man. I, I, I mean, folks may, may notice, I am a product of Madison Park. I went to Madison Park. I know what, what it can do. In fact, some of my, my brother, who's an electrician, never went to college because he was trained there. The guy that did some renovations recently in my home, went to Madison Park. He's a general contractor. So we know what it can do, which is to offer an alternative path for, you know, us in the city of Boston to get a quality job, to own a business without incurring significant, you know, college debt and so on. Which I obviously went and ended up going to Mass Hammers and then Howard Law, as I said. But I will say this, I'll add this too. I, I, as an electoral official, I was able to get funding for Madison Park. For particularly, for instance, they were able to get the culinary program. I was able to get them funding to, to get, uh, uh, what is it? The food truck that they had, okay? I also got them funding from, 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 from the state to do, to buy computers to make sure that kids are getting not only those trainings for trades, but also coding and computer science, right? So to me, really Madison Park, the plan, it's, it's really very simple. And it's not necessarily about, you know, what's going on at the school, it's what's going on, you know, above the school, if you will. I think there's not enough focus on Madison Park and what it can contribute to our school. Most of what you hear on the news is about the exam schools and what we should be doing with the exam schools and so on. And that's great, but my vision is that BPS in general, we have an alternative path for students to get out of schools with, uh, 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 you know, even at high school level, perhaps with some college degrees from high school, but also with training so they can get a job right away. So that's my vision and I'm gonna, as I have for the past, you know, since certainly since I was elected and I continue to be engaged, whether it was with the, with the leadership at Madison Park. And I would say for instance, I, you know, I, they just changed the leadership at Madison Park not too long ago. Again, this is a man that I, I knew Kevin, worked there for some time. I had built with them. A lot of that is the leadership that keeps changing and different people coming up with different ideas about what to do long term.
Why do they keep changing the leadership?
I mean, you know, I guess it's to some extent as he says, she said, but it's just, it's, it's sort of like, okay, it's not getting it right, so it must be the leadership. But the leadership is at, well, maybe three or four years or five years to do the job. I think there needs to be a long-term plan that we stick to, right? I mean, right now, for instance, you know, Madison Park could be, you know, the, the example in the country. Let's look at what other countries, excuse me, other states are doing with their, not even af, actually, you don't even have to go outside the state. There's many vocational schools that are going in, in, that are happening in Massachusetts that are doing very well. They've been looking at what they're doing, right? So for instance, we need to do, talk about a plan, we need to do an inventory of, of, of the training programs that they have there and see what kind of jobs are available within the city, within the state that we can connect those, right? And if it's a program that perhaps there's no jobs in that space, maybe we bring a new program that, that, that in fact, there's jobs, right? So I think doing analysis of the program is, it matters, right? To sort of analysis and audit, right? To look at, say mechanic or electricity, right? When you go to, where, where are the jobs available in the city to do those? Okay, we go to, I know another one that unfortunately was highlighted in a bad way in the globe was cosmetology, the, the hair program. What, you know, where are the jobs that, that are, that are available? And can we plug students in those jobs? I mean, particularly cosmetology, another one, a big one, right? Which again, the globe role, I think, earlier this year about all the dysfunction that's happening there. But really, why couldn't, I mean, we don't have problems with hair salons and barber shops in our community, right? If you're talking about air minimum, that, but so we need to connect students with jobs, I think, in the industries that they need to, need to go right away, right in school.
Would you support another vocational school in Boston? Boston is so rich where we have only one school.
I, I honestly, I'm, I'm, I come from the school of thought that, you know, we, you know, you sort of, sort of, you repair before you expand. Okay, so like, you know, like we, we can't even, the one building that we have that has a facility, that all of that is there. Right? We can't pay a cost intention and get it right, really, if you, if you wanna be honest. Where do we, why do we, you know, expand and grade another program somewhere else? I do think though that we need infrastructure, a program that sort of like uses, uses Madison. In fact, what's one of the teachers, my, my teacher from Madison Park, Miss, Miss Baker told me this. Timothy, which is the middle school across the street from it, could be a school that's used as a feeder into Madison, right? Which, which they don't right now, right? And use Madison as a, as a space, as the main one and perhaps create, you know, sort of like others in other schools, right? But I wouldn't say, okay, let's go get this other one built. I think we use Madison as the umbrella or as the core and sort of figure out how do we get other places, other schools, smaller programs depending on interest of students in those areas, right? But, you know, it's hard to, if you can't get this right, you know, it's like if the home is already in disrepair, you try to go build on top.
The homeless, I have a question about that because the city is so rich and every year we see the homelessness getting, it's a big crisis in the city.
Right.
We have young student now, some of them are homelessness, homeless, but I'm sorry. So what would you, we are playing will be to help solve that problem we're having in Boston, a rich city like Boston.
Yeah, homelessness is, I, I think homelessness, honestly, is particularly when we're talking about what's going on in Boston, when everybody talks about the, uh, uh, Manette Cass Boulevard, right, the so-called, the town. It's, it's, it's a tough comp, and it's a complex issue and I've seen it from different angles, right? And it's, there's not an easy fix, right? So really, when homelessness, homelessness always sort of existed, but the uptick of it, when it became really bad was around two thousand and fourteen or fifteen, when I got elected actually state rep. That's when two things happened. And one, the opioid epidemic really hit the state very hard, right? People were dying with synthetic drug throughout the state. Two, for the city of Boston's particularly, the Long Island, you know, area of services shut down because of the bridge issues, right? Yeah. Be, so then in that area, and the third component of it is that already in, in that area, there's a lot of concentration of services, right? So you had an influx of people coming from sometimes out of, out of the Boston area to come and get services over there. And then, you know, because it's such a hub, right, in that area, you go to the, it's a, you have the highway over there, you got Mass Ave. Then the drug dealers started coming in and seeing what's going on. It became like the demand for drugs became higher. And then we had COVID hit, right? So like, it was almost like a perfect storm. But I do think that, you know, some of the things that can be done is, and I try to do this, excuse me, when I was on Beacon Hill, okay? I, I had a, a bill that I filed that I asked the Secretary of Health, the Human Services, which I think still Secretary Sutters, at the state level to one, examine the area and ask, and, and ask the programs to sort of disperse. How can we offer services to folks that are not from the city in their own community, right? It's sort of like the affordable housing thing too, like a lot of it is being built in us, right? The some, some of the suburbs that not like particularly like, I remember one, one woman, I'd say a quick joke, right? They were trying to build a, 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 affordable housing in, in Newton, like a small one, right? The mayor wouldn't let it happen, right? The, and, and, and actually, and I won't say it because he's a good friend of mine, but like when, when City Warren was at, was running for, for, for governor, remember that? And he was, uh, he, uh, he was governor of Senate. What did he run for the most recent?
Which one though? Are you talking about the, that's the, what phrase you're talking about?
City Warren ran for.
Senate.
He ran for Senate. I think he ran for governor briefly. Yeah, he did run for governor, right? And I asked one of the housing advocates in my community, who they're gonna vote for, they, she said everyone but him. Because they couldn't get something built in, 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 in Newton, like a small affordable housing department, okay? Uh, uh, so, uh, housing, okay? You follow what I'm saying? So this, this thing with like opioid epidemic, same thing, where a lot of, I feel like a lot of the surrounding areas and beyond are not taking their, their, their share of, of responsibility to provide services to their, to their residents. So residents coming into the city. Now, I think the single most important thing that we can do to fix that, in fact, I just had a conversation with a constituent D four who was in the mental health space, excuse me, mental, uh, drug addiction space as, as a profession and works in that area. And she was telling me and how, how, you know, when they had the, the, uh, the island, it, it made sense because it was over there. Again, drug dealers did not come, no, folks were not coming to sell to, to people over there. So I think the most single important thing we can do, and which I know the prior mayor was trying to do, is to reopen the, uh, the island. And, and I think actually, Kim Janey said that, uh, we should even look at perhaps, uh, you know, putting people on bus, on numbers on, on, on boats to take them there. So I think really that's what's gonna hopefully alleviate the issue, right? But with COVID nineteen, drug epidemic, you know, homelessness, you have all of these issues combined. And if you wanna say, oh, this is what we should do, we should do, but it's not very easy, right? People are saying for us, let's do safe injection sites where folks can inject themselves, you know, with, you know, with, with drugs or not. And then there's doctors in, in place, there's people that's giving them guidance and all of that, right? But that's controversial. Some people are against it as well. But when you have really, the, at the core of this is addiction. And as humans, we, you know, addiction is, I mean, I have, I have addiction in my family too, particularly workaholic related issues. It's not easy, you know, people get, you know, they get better for six months, they get back in, right? And it's sometimes a lifetime control, right, that unfortunate drugs have. So I think that's the combination and at the core of it is, is the addiction that's really got a hold of people. And I think the city has tried to do different things. We're gonna keep trying. But I think nothing, like the best thing we can do is find an alternative way to get people to, to the island or find a location where it could serve the same purpose as the island did.
Okay, I spoke to some folks and some constituents out there and they said to me, Erlich, I cannot afford to leave in Dorchester anymore. The prices for housing are so high. But when it comes to my age car insurance policy, it's so high as well. They feel like those neighborhoods been stigmatized as bad neighborhoods.
Right.
How would you work as a city council with your other city council college to make sure those areas, those, those city or town not sting, stop being stigmatized as bad neighborhoods?
Yeah, so I, I'm glad, no, and it's funny because the issues unfortunately, uh, they become the same, right? This is another thing that when I was in Beacon Hill, I was trying to figure out, right? Is that why is it that insurance in, in Dorchester is cheaper than in Milton, right? And I actually talked to some of the folks in the industry and I, I, I believe if I remember correctly, this is a while ago. I filed the bill to do, to, to, to call the insurance companies to the table, uh, to, to, to push back on essentially. And so as a city councilor, it's, it's not an easy job to do because it's really a state sort of space, right?
But you can work with the mayor.
Yeah, I can work with the mayor. I can work with the mayor and I can work with the Boston delegation at the State House to keep looking at this issue. The, the, the thing that, at least if I remember correctly, that this problem focuses on is that unfortunately for us, it's also tied, it, it's tied to, to the reputation, as you said, to perhaps that we're not, uh, you know, it's a bad neighborhood. But we also unfortunately do have, you know, the cars being stolen in the neighborhoods more so perhaps than, than, than.
That's a public safety issue. Are the mayors actually gonna have more police? Are you gonna support more police to check those neighborhoods, to stop those crimes, those?
Let's not even start with the police, man. The police issue is, is, it's so divisive right now, right? On one hand, we have, I'm, you know, I'm raising my daughters right on Fuller Street, uh, uh, right there in Ashmont. And, and often, too often unfortunately, there's incidents that happen near me or incidents that happen down the street from me, right? Uh, that, that, you know, that police comes up, right? Or we, we too often those areas have, you know, the, even the choppers come up, right? Uh, because of homicides and things like that. Now, we want police in our community, right? But we also, the, the, the problem with over policing, if you will, is that, you know, so Boston, so if, if there's not, so if, if, if people, if police are concentrated in district four in, in Codman Square and so on, right? They, then this is where technically people will be making, committing crimes, right? Because they'd be looking for those things to happen, right? This is where some of the issues of if, um, the, well, such a seizure comes out, where people, police are just, uh, or, or FIOs is what they call them, where they just stop you and, and, you know, take your name information that with the ACLU is pushed back on because the overwhelming majority of those people being stopped by police in the city of Boston is black people. But the reality is too though, is, is that the police can turn around and say, yeah, that's because we, you know, we get called to those communities a lot and there is drug activities, you know, if you look for instance for, where you go to Manette Cass Boulevard, you look at some of the areas in the city of Boston where the, you know, there's more drug activity. So it's a cash twenty-two is, if you, if you will, because if police is around, they're likely will see stuff, right? But the, the, some people will say that if you had a high concentration of police in West Roxbury too, there would just be as many people being arrested and stopped, right? Because, uh, because those things are happening, right? So I think policing in the city of Boston, right now, it's actually in an okay space in a sense that particularly after George Floyd, okay, and after COVID nineteen, you remember George Floyd protest? Mayor Walsh, who was still mayor then, created a task force that create, that made recommendations. This is during COVID nineteen, the height of it, when protests were happening, he created a task force made up of lawyers, city, city leaders, rev, uh, pastors. Uh, in fact, it was led by Wayne Budd, who's one of the most prominent lawyers in the city, was actually a mentor of mine. In fact, he's the chair of my campaign. They made recommendations as to what we can change about, about policing in the city of Boston, okay? For instance, one of the new thing that's now exists in the city of Boston, department is called Office of Police Accountability and Transparency, which actually the woman that is the leader of it now, Stephanie Everett, I think she used to have office in this building, if I remember correctly. She is a lawyer, I remember. I came visit her over here. She's a black lawyer that lives in Mattapan down the street. So that office is gonna be in charge to sort of handle police complaints of individuals. They're gonna, they're gonna be working with police about diversity issues, training and so on, right? So we are going in the right direction, I think, right? But to some extent, you know, the turmoil that existed or exists now is sort of sometimes necessary, right? That, you know, say, they say out of struggle, progress happens, right? So it's unfortunate that, you know, the police, you know, is what it is and it's, and, and not in the city of Boston only, but in the country, right? I mean, thankfully, by and large in the city of Boston, we haven't had some of those well-publicized incidents of police killing black men for little to nothing, right? But police, uh, you know, they, they do, um, they, they have in our reputation that we have to, to fix. So we gotta hire more people that is from the community. We gotta have more people that's police that shows up to a Haitian home that speak Haitian language, right? That, all that helps, right? When, 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 when the mom is excited and the son is yelling and, you know, the police shows up, they don't even know the language, right? And the son is, is like ready to burst, but they don't know that the son is, is perhaps dealing with some mental health issues because of language barrier. They tackle the son, you know, then this is how things escalate. So I think the more we can hire people that are from the city, that are, you know, that speak different languages, that are well-trained, right? That are walk in the community, that are literally, you know, get to know who, who Miss Jackson is down the corner, the easier it is that policing can be in the city of Boston. That's, that's my vision of policing.
Before I let you go, I have two more questions, two more questions to ask. First, the first one, what is the core value of your campaign?
What is the what?
The core value of your campaign.
The core value of my campaign is people first. My, my, the reason, and it's the core value of, of me, is that I am in, in government because I've had some privileges in my life and some blessings. I've been lucky enough to, to go and acquire some education and be fortunate to, to have, you know, the American dream, if you will. So I've been in government and I've committed, I've devoted my life so others can also achieve their dreams, right? So the core of my campaign is that I will be as I have been, which is trying to improve the lives of others. Trying to prove the lives of folks in district four, right? Just like not too long ago, when TPS was formally formalized, I spent hours over in Mattapan helping Haitian community fill out TPS forms. I'm an attorney, I'm reviewing the TPS, right? To make sure the date of birthdays are correct, that's all, that, all, all the, you know, the parameters are there. And, you know, these are folks that are not even gonna vote for me, right? Because they're not, you know, they're not even documented because they're applying for TPS, right? I feel that's my job, it's my mission in life that the skills that I've acquired as an attorney is to benefit others.
Okay, people first. What would you do different as your former state now if you elected as a silicon film? What would you do different too?
I, you know what? I think what I would do different in this space, the job almost requires me to be different in the space is that as a state rep, I'm state, then the city councilor is a mayor. As a state rep, I didn't play a lot significant role in development because I felt that. Because I felt that that was primarily a city responsibility, which it is, right? I think that's the space that I'm really looking forward to, is 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 help, you know, our community in the process. Of development in our neighborhoods, right? Because right now, it's all, it's it's all developing, developers are bad, the community feel like they don't have a voice, right? And I'm I'm very, one of the skills I have is 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 listening, is bringing people to the table and getting things done. And I look forward to playing a significant role in the development of how District Four is developed in a responsible way that takes community. Puts the community first, again, people first, but yeah, people that have their laws, they wanna build something nice, they should make a little money out of it too, right? Right? But we shouldn't take all of the single families that's out here and build, you know, six, sevens units, right? We shouldn't take all of the green space that we, the little that we have, the little lots with the little, you know, trees. Tear them down and build a bunch of units, right? So I have some ideas, but I think to me, the most important thing going forward. That really, the job is very hands-on, it's different, it's like, okay, potholes, right? It's different in state where you sort of look at the policy, you are a little bit more removed. This is why they say local elected officials are the closest to the problem. And city councillor really is that first person you can touch, reach out to. If you any part, like whether it's city, state or federal government, you should, that's the person that should be closer to you. If you have an issue that you need uh help with, and that's what I intend to do.
As we are approaching September fourteen, Tuesday, September fourteen, twenty twenty one. Why Haitian American should trust you again and vote for you to become a silicone film?
Key key word you said, again, it's because the Haitian American in Amer- already trusts me. Why? Because I've already been built the relationships. They know that I show up to their church. They know that I help with the food pantries, they know that I help with the T P S forums, they know that I rally for T P S. They see me, right? And often when I go to the churches, Haitian, my Haitian people just come to me and start speaking Haitian Creole. I just say, I'm Haitian, I just happened to be born in Africa, right? Because me, I'm I I'm literally do.
Look at the camera and tell me.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So as I often tell you, all my Haitian people, okay, is that I am Haitian, I happen to be born in Africa. That's because I believe that we black people are wanting the same. This is why when I go to your church, you talk to me Haitian Creole. You know that I'm an attorney, you know that I go to your church, you know that I help feed your hungry, you know that I help with the T P S forums. You don't have to guess what I bring to the table. What you get is an honest young man, young man, I'll turn forty next year, next month, next week.
Still young, forty's the new twenty.
Forty, forty's the new twenty, who's who's gonna turn forty, raising two beautiful daughters, they're married. And bring the same vows that you want for your children. I represent, in fact, one of the young ladies that's helping my campaign is Haitian, and she said this to me. I I I'm voting for you because my parents came from Haiti and they wanted a better life for our children. They told me that in America, if you get an education, you work hard, you can be anything, and you will eventually represent that. And that's why I should vote for them, because I'm a representation of what their children can be, and I can help get their children there. Thank you.
Diversity is what makes America great. December, September fourteen, twenty twenty one, you will decide who to vote for. The Debel Top is leading you to the road to the primary election. I report, you decide. My name is Erich Tronias. A very pleasant evening, everybody.
Good job, dude. I like the.